All right. Good evening, everybody. Now, the air conditioning apparently has went out, but I'm feeling this breeze right here, so I got lucky, so. So if I move my chair back here, would that be all right? I don't know. If you get too hot, you know, you could take off your jacket, you know, that's about it. Okay? But anyway, we're gonna get started tonight. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded for those physically present in the chamber, council chamber, who desire to address the city council during the meeting. Please compete, complete the request of speak form available at the front entrance of the council chambers presented to the city clerk, which is right down here. Deborah, raise your hand. Yeah. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. So during our public comment, you could talk about anything, but please fill out a form. I mean, you could talk about how hot it is in here or how cold it is, but on the other things, if it's an agenda item, that's a separate form that you speak on, okay? But please turn those requests to speak forms into the city clerk. All right. So I'm gonna go and call the meeting to order, the regular city council meeting, July 9, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. The invocation be given by Pastor Jason at Living Word Inland Empire Church. Pastor Jason, you see here? And then, please remain standing. Mayor Protem will be leading us in pledge of allegiance.
Oh, prayer? Sorry. Said pledge of allegiance.
Well, we could pledge to God, you know, it's the same thing.
Okay, all right, all right. Amen, first hand, but let's pray, let's pray.
We'll let you do the hard part, buddy.
Amen, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. God, first of all, we like to thank you. You know, we like to thank you for today's blessings and for today's health. We thank you for your unconditional love and your abundant mercy and your abundant grace. Father, we come to you this evening asking that you would be with us in this special meeting, God. Holy Spirit, we invite your presence in this place now. We ask for your guidance and for your direction. We thank you for everyone that has gathered here today. Father, we lift up, God, the mayor and every city official, member that is here, Lord God. Father, we lift them up to you, God, and we just pray, God, that you would give them guidance and strength, God. Lord, that you would give them discernment, God, as they make decisions, God, and address everything that needs to be addressed today, Father. We pray, God, give them strength and wisdom, and Lord, we just thank you for today, God. Once again, Lord, we ask, God, that you be honored and you be glorified in this very place. We thank you now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join with me, pledging allegiance to the greatest country on earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Pastor. You know, when you said that, Allison and I thought about Christmas Vacation. Have you seen that movie?
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's, but you know, we are pledging our allegiance to our Lord, so you're all right. Okay. Madam City Clerk, come in, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sabino.
Present.
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Allen is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Public comment, this opportunity for members of the public to comment any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, and the city council may not discuss or act on any item on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff. The questions raised during the public comment and any requests of matter be agendized. Do we have any public comment?
We have a written comment from Grand Terrace resident Bobby Forbes. I placed her email at the dais for each of you. She just wanted me to express her concern regarding the street sweeper that apparently was, did a poor job on July 6 on Burns Avenue by her, her residents.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that, that problem's been addressed and they're gonna, when they're gonna redo that, Conrad, the street?
They'll redo it on Thursday.
Thursday. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other public comment?
No, sir.
Special presentation. Is this why we're all here tonight, for the special presentation? Okay. Let me hope I don't mess up the names. Priscilla Munoz and Diana Figueroa, is that how you say it? I'm close, yeah. How do you say Diana, Deanna? What? Just go to the podium, please.
It's Danae.
Young ladies, Danae.
Yeah.
Okay. What a beautiful name.
It's Danae.
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 Yeah.
Okay. Danae.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for correcting me. Is it on?
There we go.
Okay. So Priscilla and Danae were juniors at the Grand Terrace High School for 2023, 2024 school year. And whereas Priscilla and Danae took first place at the Grand Terrace High School Colton Joint Unified School District Science and Engineering Fair for the senior division on January 20, 2024, for their smart device for visually impaired concept ability to distinguish colors and objects. That's pretty good. You know, I'm colorblind, so that probably helped me.
Oh, so is my brother.
Whereas over 300 million people around the world, and I'm one of them, are colorblind, at least 2.2 billion have visual impair, which are ways smart devices visually impaired aims to assist in pair identity colors and objective to voice activated by Alexa. And Priscilla and Danae, right?
Danae.
Yeah, okay. Well, also won Gold at San Bernardino and Indian mono county science and engineer fair, where they participate in both California Science and Engineering Fair and International Science and Engineering Fair. Whereas they also received $58,000 academic award for international science fair to attend. Are you here to give us a check? Oh, this, you guys get the money. Good job, girls.
Thank you.
Now, I, Bill Hussey, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, on the behalf of the entire city hereby, thank you guys for all your hard work and dedication and, you know, how did you guys come up with that idea for the, the color and visually impaired?
So my brother, he's red-green colorblind, and he had a hard time differentiating colors, especially when he was little. He was told that he couldn't be a police officer or an electrician, so we decided to tackle that problem, and it led us all the way up to here.
Wow.
And like additionally is, I have other projects since I was in sixth grade, where I've dealt with technology for helping people who have disabilities, so I did like another glove for people who were deaf, so it speaks out sign language into verbal text.
Good job. So you guys are gonna go to Arizona State University or?
I'll go first. Um, I unfortunately will not. I will be attending Caltech.
And I'm keeping my options open until I get all my financial aid packages and then make the best financial decision and my major.
That's good. Well, we're very proud of you, the city is. I'm sure your school's very proud of you and your department's very proud of you. I mean, when I was a kid, we ate glue and stuff. We didn't make stuff. Come a long way since that and, you know, would the council like to say anything for these?
I just want to thank you both for seeing the need, especially with disadvantaged demographics, and for being two women who took the initiative and, you know, made it all the way with your achievements, so congratulations to you both.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
You found a need and you satisfied it. Some of the most brilliant things that have taken place in humanity have been with that formula, and so continue. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
I'm always so very impressed with our young people, how well they present themselves, the brainiacs that they become and still normalized human beings. It's really, really nice to hear your presentation, and I would suspect that Caltech is a much more significant offer than Arizona State University. So thank you for your time and effort, and we wish you the best.
Thank you.
City manager?
Yeah, I don't want to leave you to speak at this, but I really wanted to commend both of you. First, your project's phenomenal, but secondly, you are two young ladies entering the STEM course of work, and you are becoming an example. In the next 10 years, the next 20 years, there will be young women and girls that will follow in your footsteps, and you're blazing the trail for them. And beyond what you're accomplishing here, that in itself is remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what's your next step now with this project, is it?
So we want to convert it into something more user accessible, like glasses, and not, and like Priscilla said earlier, expand it to not just colorblind, but everyone who's visually impaired. So that would be like object recognition as well as color.
Yeah, we actually met up with someone that viewed our project, who is actually overall blind, and he has a community outside of what he does, and he wants us to take us in to see how overall the community of people who are blind is, and to see what the actual struggle is, and to take that upon our project.
That's very good. A lot of research and it's gonna pay off. I'm sure your whole family's proud of you, too. We are, and, okay, yeah. Well, if you'd like to, we're gonna present you with the plaque, and you get to take a picture with us, and would you guys like to take a picture with us?
Yes, of course.
Is that all right? Thank you, you know, because when you're famous one day, go, hey, I know those two girls. Well, come on up here. You know, before we stop with that, I'm sure the principal would like to say something on behalf of his students here. I know you're very proud of your, your school there.
Yes, and so one of our mottos here at Grand Terrace High School is be great, graduate, and these ladies exemplify that idea of being great with, as they mentioned, that females in the STEM, but not only that, though, they are an example of just excellent students, and they are somebody that we can, and our students lead, and it is something very proud of them. And so I just want to say not only thank you guys for honoring them, but also thank you ladies for being an excellent example and being able to be someplace that we can put that up. I'm excited to have their colleges read. Every year, we do a college signing, and it is something that I'm excited to not only talk about, for, not only for our students in seeing that, but all of our student body and our community to realize that Grand Terrace High School is such a great place with the support of not only our city, our city council, and our district. It's just a real proud of them and appreciate that.
We are, too. And they're juniors, right, there?
Correct. We have one more year with them, so we're really excited.
Okay, well, you know, Conrad, if we need to hire them for something?
Actually, we are. We have, at least one is dedicated as an intern this summer, and the other one, I think we could, we're gonna try and recruit her away from Caltech.
Good luck. Hey, you know what? Grand Terrace is a better option, let me just say. The mayor, I don't know, but you know, but thank you. Thank you, sir. And we're, like I said, we are very proud of you guys. All right. Also, probably, I'll let you finish the rest of the meeting if you want to do it, you know? Okay. What do we got next here? Oh, I had a whole script in the back. Was I supposed to do this, too?
Consent. Yeah, you passed. It's okay.
Hmm?
It's fine.
Is it all right? I didn't turn the page.
Just move on.
Okay, because I'm like SPTC. So we have, nobody else wants to present them with anything, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm like, what am I missed here? See what happens when you turn the air conditioning off, you know? All right, consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial and be acted upon at city council at any one time without discussion. Councilmember, staff member, or citizens may request removal of the item in the consent calendar for discussion. Is there any items, requests for removal or discussion? No? Is there any public comment, any consent calendars?
No, sir.
Okay, before we vote, I mean, do we have a motion and a second before they move it?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilwoman Sabino. So the city attorney, you want to read?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for item four on the consent calendar, which is D4A, I will read the title of the ordinance. It is ordinance number 355, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, state of California, repealing and replacing chapter 10.08, speed limits of Title X vehicles and traffic of the Grand Terrace municipal code in its entirety and establishing speed limits for city streets. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So a motion and a second, please vote. Oh, yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
He popped his button over here. Public hearing. Item E, introduction, first reading of the ordinance approving zone change amendment, ZCA 2403, amended city Grand Terrace municipal code title 18, zoting to add new residential land use called countering living and health facilities, electric vehicle charging station, laudable residential land in use of chapter 18.10 residential district to add non-residential hours operation and to consolidate all non-residential land use identifier under chapter 18.30 AP administrative professional district 18.33, C2 general business district 18.36, CM commercial manufacturer district 18.39, MR residential manufacturing district 18.40, M2 industrial district 18.43, PUB public facility district into the table format under a new chapter 18.27, non-residential districts to add to non-residential use of call to heavy equipment rental indoor and outdoor electric vehicle charging, establishment onsite alcohol beverage sales and consumption are not bona fide, bona fide eating established bars, taverns, cocktail lounges, breweries, distilleries, and wine making facilities with sales onsite and offsite consumption. SEQA, the adoption of the, of the ordinance is not a project that is subject to SEQA review because it will result in direct physical change in the environment or for responsible physical and directly physically changed in the environmental. See paragraph 15061B3, common sense explanation. You guys are all leaving after I read all that? Okay. You guys have a good night. All right. Did I get everything, city attorney? I mean, you guys really put an article out here.
Don't worry about it, because I'll have to read through it again one more time for you.
Are you kidding me? All right. Well, presented by Scott. Scott, no?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council and the public in attendance tonight. We are doing some work on retooling our municipal code to make it more streamlined and easier for everybody to use, and so apologize, this might be the longest one, we'll have to read title wise for some time, but it was necessary. So the item tonight is a zone change amendment, which is meaning we're gonna actually make edits to our zoning code, which is title 18 of the municipal code. We're asking that the city council conduct the public hearing and introduce an ordinance approving the zone change amendment, which is known as 24-03, with the inclusion of the planning commission's recommendations, and that the city council find an environmental exemption for this project. The planning commission looked at this zone change amendment on June 20 of this year to duly notice public hearing. They did approve a resolution recommending council approve this zone change amendment. They had five recommendations, which I'll briefly highlight here. Recommendation one was that certain formats of headers and tables be addressed to make them more legible. Number two was that we revised some misprints typos that were included in the section. We had a few typos, which is very kind of in the point out, and we got it rectified. Number three, we had alphabetized the land use table. We had moved a few names around, so now it's all back in ABC order. Number four, we had to revise the vehicle land uses that are in our non-residential land use table to include a differentiation between motorized vehicles and things like boats and trailers that are not motorized vehicles. And number five, we included at their recommendation in both residential and non-residential land use tables, electric vehicle charging stations as a land use, as they noted that that wasn't in there, and they would like to see that. And staff did put that in there at their recommendation. A little bit of background for everybody regarding our non-residential land uses, those are types of land uses or businesses that can occur on properties that are zoned not for residential purposes. And our zoning municipal code title 18 is what regulates that. It tells you what can occur and not occur, or what can occur with like a conditional use permit in those areas. For the residential zoning districts, we also have special districts and tables. Those are currently in the actual code, so if you go to those sections, it's easy to find what's allowed in what residential or special district. However, in our non-residential residential zoning districts, there is no such table, so it's very murky and difficult for businesses and residents and folks to navigate that. So instead of having a nice table in the non-residential section like we have elsewhere in the code, you have to go to individual chapter, then go to individual section, and then read, and a lot of times they reference in on themselves and point to each other, which makes it a little more tricky. An example of an existing table we have right now is if you go online to our zoning code under residential, you'll see we have a residential land use table. It's really easy to use. The uses or the type of use, like say, single-family home was on the left on the row. To the right are your columns representing all your residential land use zones. You just find the use, and you slide to the right, you match it up with your column for the zone that applies to your property, and there you know, are you permitted, prohibited, or conditionally allowed? So that's the exercise we want to bring to the non-residential section of the code. Currently, if you were to go under the non-residential section, I just use public facilities district for a quick example, because it's short and it can fit on the screen capture. It doesn't have a table that it's in part of. You have to go and find permitted uses, which are listed individually, and they go to conditionally permitted uses, which are listed individually, and so on. So we want to extract all this information from the non-residential zones and create a nice table. Additionally, what's unique is when we were looking at these tables that we want to create for the non-residential uses, is there's no clear section in our municipal code that establishes what are the standard hours that a business can operate within our non-residential zones. We do know that through a definition in the zoning code, there is a thing called after-hours operation, which is 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and that is defined, and it's also referenced sporadically throughout certain land uses in the non-residential chapters. What we wanted to do was standardize that and also standardize the process. So if you look in the current municipal code, there's footnotes in certain sections that discuss the process you can have after-hours on your business. It breaks down by how big your suite is or your business is, so if you're sub 2,000 square feet, there is a process where myself and my role as planning director would be able to give you hours between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. If you're over 2,000 square feet, there's currently a process that's called the conditional use permit process that would go through the planning commission at a public hearing. So right now, the, the process is kind of hidden within the language of the current code, and it's bifurcated, and these are issues we're gonna address here in our zone text amendment, zone change amendment, which I'll discuss here shortly. We also had a number of land uses that have been at the forefront of our planning activities in recent months that aren't currently in the table, so while we're creating a new land use table, we're gonna insert these in, and I'll highlight the ones we're putting in. We have heavy equipment rentals, indoor/outdoor. We have bars, taverns, cocktail lounges, breweries that are not a restaurant. We have cocktail lounge bar in a restaurant. We have congregate living health facilities, and we have electric vehicle charging stations, with the last being the recommendation from the planning commission. To recap for everybody in attendance, we do have a number of non-residential zones. We have the AP, the C2, the CM, the MR, the M2, and the pub, and these zones are reflected on our city's approved zoning map. So the exercise you go through, if you were to come into city hall, is we would find where you are on the map property-wise, identify the color, it's coded to the zone. From that zone, we would be able to go into our new land use table and let you know, can you have a restaurant at this location? Can you have, you know, a hardware store? Can you have a drive-through, fast food restaurant, and so on and so forth? So as I mentioned, those individual chapters, they're being consolidated into a nice new chapter 18.27, and it will be a, a non-residential land use table. It'll have footnotes as well that'll address, all uses are subject to the hours operation, which I'll discuss here in a future slide. They also go into explaining what is a bona fide public eating place. This is for the purposes of ABC liquor licensing, so you can determine what is a restaurant with liquor sales as an accessory to their food, and then what is strictly just a bar where food is ancillary and the main purpose to go to that location is to drink. And we also included the EV charging stations, streamline permitting process. There's state laws that took effect a couple years ago. We hadn't yet put it in the code, so it was kind of serendipitous that the planning commission wanted us to insert the land use for EV charging stations, because we also had to put in some language from the state that requires us to do a streamlined permitting process at the building counter for EV charging stations, so it just dovetailed nicely. Regarding the hours operation, as I mentioned, it was murky at best and kind of confusing and had a bifurcated process. What we're proposing in this zone change amendment is that all non-residential uses listed in our new non-residential land use table, they're subject to standard hours, and those standard hours are 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and that's for any non-residential use that's located within 300 feet of any residential property. Any requests for after-hours, which is 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and you're within 300 feet of a residential property, that is now going to be strictly just a conditional use permit that is brought before the planning commission. We're not going to do the old way where they had split it based on that 2,000-foot lit miss test. We're no longer going to do the administrative, you know, CUP, where I could approve hours of operation. It's all going to go to the planning commission. Additionally, we have addressed any use that doesn't require a CUP, but is more than 301 feet away from any kind of residential property, they can have a 24/7 operation standard. When it comes to onsite alcohol consumption with no meals, we included this in the code because currently there was no land use light item to address establishments with the onsite alcohol beverage sales and consumption that are not a place you go get food, not a restaurant. So that includes kind of a wide range of types of uses. We have the bars, the taverns, the cocktail lounges, the breweries, distilleries, wine making facilities, and we, in agreement with the planning commission, we are going to require them to do a C, a CUP, a conditional use permit, to go into any land use AP, C2, CM, and MR zone. So those are not over the counter, not administrative, they do require public hearing. When it comes to heavy equipment rentals, we had an inquiry regarding equipment rental facility, and we looked in our code and realized we had equipment sales and we had equipment services, both indoor/outdoor, but we didn't have rentals. So we figured we should clarify that, and we inserted rentals. If it's indoors, it's permitted, meaning it's business license, is building tenant improvement, C of O. If it's outdoors, it's conditional use permit. It will go to the planning commission for a public hearing. When we addressed our restaurant issue with the liquor sales, we had a restaurant land use that said, "Without cocktail lounge, bar, entertainment, or dancing," and we have one with it. So if they do have cocktail lounge, bar, entertainment, or dancing, we made that a C for a conditional use permit, requiring planning commission approval of use permitted at a public hearing in the C2, CM, and MR zones. We had a number of vehicle land uses. It was very verbose, it was, it's very thorough. At some point, they were very thorough in creating these land uses for vehicles, and we put those in ABC order, and we also split the boats and the vessels and the trailers and campers away from, you know, cars, trucks, and motorcycles. That was at the direction of our planning commission, so we rewarded it clearly, and we also inserted the EV charging stations under automotive uses as well. And the EV charging stations are an accessory use, and those are permitted by right. We also have a number of residential zones in this city. We have the RH, the R1, which is single-family zones, and then we get to the R2, to the R3s, which are our multifamily zones. Those are all, of course, represented in our zoning map, just like the non-residential zones are. So if you're in a residential property, like the bulk of the city is a single-family, which is yellow, you would go over and see, okay, I'm in the R1 7.2. is yellow, you would go over and see, okay, I'm in the R1 7.2 zone, and from there, you could go to your land use table and see what's allowed or not allowed. In our land use table, we had an inquiry for state-licensed congregate-living health facilities. Those are a multifamily use, so they go in our multifamily zones, the R2 and R3s. And with the planning commission's recommendation, we're going to require those to have a conditional use permit, which is a public hearing before the planning commission. The state statute does say you can make them permitted by right, but staff's recommendation and planning commission concurred was that it should go to public hearing for those uses. We also inserted at the planning commission's direction, the electric vehicle charging stations as well as an accessory use. So if you were to have a home charger or if an apartment complex needed a charger, those are permitted by right, and they're all subject to the streamlining expedited permit review that we have through the building and safety division. In conclusion, our zone change amendment 24-03 is sequo exempt, it has the common sense exemption. We did all duly notice publication required for this item for both the planning commission meeting last month and the city council tonight. All findings can be made or included in the ordinance proprietary attachment one, and staff is in support of the planning commission's recommendation that the city council approve this ordinance for zone change amendment 24-03, with the inclusion of their five planning commission recommendations which staff incorporated into the ordinance. Thank you for your consideration. I'm available for any comments the council or the public may have tonight.
Thank you, council. Questions? Mayor Protem?
Just need a few clarifications. This is a big thing that we're looking at here, even though we say that it doesn't actually materially affect residential, it does. Primarily because even though it takes the commercial aspect and encapsulates it in an understandable format, it also addresses some residential aspects. And so my first one is, on packet page 152, packet page 152 has to do with 18.27.020, non-residential hours of operation. The standard hours of operation between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM should be applicable to all non-residential land use located within 300 feet. I take issue with the 300 feet. I'd like to find out where that came from, because when we do our noticing, we have to make sure that everybody within 500 feet has, have been noticed. And it would seem to me that the same rule might apply here, that if there is going to be an impact, that that 300 feet should be ballooned out to a 500-foot condition so that we're, you know, structurally, you know, mitered. The other thing is the standard hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. How does that dovetail with the, with our noise ordinance? Because my understanding of our noise ordinance is, is it's 7:00 AM to, you know, whatever, you know, dusk, I think, somewhere in that direction. So if we're going to bounce one against the other, I think we could have a little bit of trouble. So anyway, those are my first questions.
All right. I'll start with the first one. The 300 feet is strictly staff's proposal, and there was no concern at the planning commission, but it could definitely be adjusted if the city council feels the 300 feet is too shallow, and if 500 feet is a more reasonable number. By all means, we could definitely update and make that edit as a part of your review and recommendation on this. As far as the 6 to 11 standard hours, we were going opposite of the currently defined in the zoning code after-hours, which is 11 to 6. But it is a good point. If there is another section it could conflict with, then that's something we should probably at a staff level look at, rectify, and bring back as a revised proposal to the city council.
Very good. Thank you. Also, let's see, explain and clarify, please, the nexus on the bona fide versus alcohol service with snacks. It's a little, it's not convoluted, but the regular Joe's going to look at that and go, wait a minute, okay. It looks like to me one of those, you're not, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't kind of thing. And so it would be better if we explained to the general populace that if it's true that a bar could serve alcohol but also serve snacks, is that where we're going?
Yeah, we were going off of the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control's definition of bona fide eating establishment because that plays into liquor licensing. So that's where we extracted that information and put it in the footnote for the non-residential land use table. What we were going for is making sure there's no hide the football when businesses come in and feign and pretend to be a restaurant when in reality, it's a bar. So we wanted to make sure we had some, you know, definition in there to make sure we could differentiate the two from each other.
Okay. Thank you. And then packet page 154, can you define what a state-licensed congregate-living health facility might be and the limitations thereon?
Yeah, I have a little information. I do have a flyer on my computer that's from the state, I think Social Services website, but I can give a brief description of exactly what they are. Let me pull it up here.
While you're looking, I know that it requires a CUP, which is an important aspect and an important axis. But I guess the question becomes, what automatic limitations do we have?
So a congregate-living health facility, per the state statute, it's a residential home that provides its inpatient care, medical supervision, 24-hour skilled care, nursing supportive care, including pharmacy, dietary, social, recreation. And it's for folks that are ventilator-dependent, diagnosis of terminal life-threatening illness or both, and persons who are catastrophically severely disabled. So it's, somebody's in a bad spot that isn't going to be mobile, it sounds like. And the overall use is licensed through the state, so they give us the opportunity to require the conditional use permit. You can also let them be permitted by right, but staff didn't feel that would be the right way to do it. So as it's written in the zone change amendment, it would be conditional use permit for the operation, and then any kind of work that has to be done or construction is also subject to our objective design standards.
What concerns me is, is that the state stuff, and I've read all of the state stuff, yanni material, but bottom line is, it's broad brush as you would anticipate, especially with this particular regime and at the state level. Governor Newsom, anyway, a nuisance. My difficulty with it is, is that it is broad brush, and that means that it doesn't really address specific things. And I realize in, under a conditional use permit, we have an opportunity to address that better. What I'm concerned with is, is that operations-wise, operations-wise, it makes it much more difficult for a local jurisdiction to put its feet into a, into operation restraints and so on in order to be able to integrate what takes place within the general commercial area and with the citizenry and, you know, as you can imagine. So I'm a little bit tentative on just a broad-brush state-licensed congregate-living health facility under the definitions that are included. I'm not happy with it. That's the best I can give it, and I am going to give, I'm going to leave the rest of it to the rest of my cohorts here. And that's all I have. Thank you.
So real quick, you brought up a question on hours, on hours for noise. I looked up our noise ordinance, and the hours are kind of all over the place. So there's a, there's a seven, there's different noise restrictions based on regular day, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM associated with property maintenance, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sundays. There's a 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM for noise associated with vibration or construction. There's a 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM on schools. There is a, so I mean, it's kind of all over the map. And maybe to address, address your concern is that we, we pick a time, and that all the noise, whether it comes from honking horns, or riding a table saw, or, you know, yelling at a pool party, kind of all falls in the same, the same timeframe.
As you can imagine, I am sensitive to noise issues, but I can, let me give you an example. I built the project that I live in, but right next to it was the second phase. And on a Sunday morning, some idiot was out there banging on the drywall at 5:30 in the morning. I went out in my pajamas and threatened him with his life, and he stopped until about 8:30 or so in that timeframe. Knowing that the noise ordinance addressed a 7:00 AM kind of start time on Saturdays, but in this case, it was Sunday, and at one time, this city actually had a prohibition on Sunday work of that, of that nature. So I agree. I think it's about time that we kind of iron out what our hours of operation situation are rather than backing into it.
So, and since, since we had that as a, a non-noise bracket, we can use the, continue that 7 to 11 as a noise bracket, and then maybe adopt that to the remainder of the code for the rest of the noises.
That coupled with the 500-foot probably will help.
So is that good for the fireworks, too? The noise, if we, if they get a ticket, can we get them on a noise also?
Oh, sure, when we catch them, yeah.
All right. I got one guy 11:30 every night, gives me a good night call. All right, Councilman, I'm going to say no.
Okay. Thank you so much for that report. I thank you, and thank you for the follow-up on the noise ordinance. Pardon me. I spent the last eight days with my daughter at national championships, and so I have a voice issue. I wanted to talk about the congregate-living health facilities. Is that something that's covered under SB 9 and a resident's ability to either bifurcate their residence or add an ADU for multi-use residential living facilities?
Well, it applies to multifamily properties.
Okay.
So SB 9, I believe, is strictly applies to single-family properties. However, ADUs can apply to both residential, single-family, and residential multifamily.
And so if a resident decided that they wanted to bifurcate or add an ADU, live in the back, and turn their home into a multi-use residential facility, being contracted with the state for that, is that something they would be able to do?
They would have to be zoned in an R2 or R3 zone on the map.
Okay. In addition...
And it's a little, there's a little more to it than just that. These are, these are facilities that are licensed as essentially OSHPOD III facilities. So these are true healthcare facilities. You can't turn your home into that. It won't have the proper fire rating, the proper exits, the, I mean, these are, for lack of a better term, these are the true end, end-of-life convalescent care-type facilities. This is not a boarding house. It's not a senior living. This is where people are literally bed-bound on ventilators and completely incapacitated.
Correct. And I appreciate that clarification because my, my follow-up question is, as we know with the state, they can't continually provide the services that people need, and so they do outsource and vendor with others. So it's my understanding that these are, these are established companies. These aren't companies that are utilizing residential locations.
Correct.
Okay.
There are, there are the, for lack of a better term, the six-packs, and this is not a six-pack. This is a true medical facility.
Okay. So we won't be seeing in-home, like drug and alcohol rehab facilities going into our neighborhoods? That doesn't entail, that's not covered under this ordinance, is that correct?
Well, I believe those are protected under different state statutes. This is not a part of this ordinance.
Okay.
This is strictly for people that are in, you know, a bad shape, end-of-life, terminal, or catastrophic injury or illness.
I appreciate that. And then just one note, not a question, on packet page 119, the second to the last sentence in there, just a typo, senior citizen under medium family, R3S. That's all. Thank you.
We'll fix it. Thank you.
Councilman Henderson, you have anything?
Nothing technical or substantial. I just want to compliment staff, manager, and Mr. Hutter involved in this process. These kind of cleanup matters have a long-term benefit and impact on the city, and so it's excellent to see the level of work and level of detail and the precision that's been applied to what's being considered by the city council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So no other questions? Open up to the public. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public. Any other comments for Scott, for deliberate vote?
None? Mayor Protem?
I think we should look into retooling the blanket state-licensed congregate-living health facilities definition.
Maybe retool and look at that and make sure it's all right? So you want to bring that part back?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask my colleague, Mr. Mayor Protem, if he was desirous of making a recommendation on the portions that we can consider favorably tonight and remand those sections or comments back to staff and the planning commission where we need additional clarification.
That's correct. Your interpretation is correct. Thank you. Councilman Henderson.
So you want to bring, look at the 500 feet versus 300 feet, have a, a noise ordinance that's uniform with everybody instead of all over the board, right? And then you want to retool and look at the end-of-life hospice care unit?
State-licensed congregate-living health facility.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything? So city manager, you have any input?
No, that's a direction. What we'd really rather not do is go back to planning commission because it's a fairly small scope that you're giving us, and we can bring this back to council. And what, under this recommendation, what will happen is, is we will open the noise section and make the noise, the adjustments in the noise section so it's compatible across the board. So whatever the city attorney reads will become longer next time.
Okay. Do we have any pending projects that are waiting for our decision on this?
We have one project that needs some of this. Actually, we have several projects that need this, but none that it's time-critical at this point. So we can, we can come back for another meeting and do it right.
Okay. So just a little fine-tuning then?
Yes.
So the attorney, you have anything?
Yes, I, my inclination is if the council wants some fine-tuning, which is perfectly fine, I would recommend continuing the item to a date certain, the entirety. Otherwise, we'd have to have our director kind of go through and identify all the revisions to take out that one section and bring that one section back at a future meeting.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate, you know, the expertise we have up here and, you know, Scott, your thing. You know, we just want to make sure everything's, you know, cross the Ts, dot the Is, and so we don't have any problems like we have in the past with, you know, future things. And, you know, they sound like good projects, and especially, you know, I, you know, I've been to some of those facilities where, you know, it's sad, the end-of-life thing, and, you know, you walk in there and I, and I know, you know, those beds are limited for a lot of these people, too, so. And then as far as the taverns and all that, I mean, the city, you guys are professionals, you know what needs to be done. So we'll just bring this back for review again, and no vote or anything on it.
Do you think, sorry to mind if I ask the director much.
No.
Do you think we could be ready by the next meeting, or do you think first meeting in August?
We can do next meeting.
All right. So then I would think the recommendation would be to continue this item to a date certain of our next meeting date of July 23rd.
Is that fine with you guys?
That would be my recommendation. That's my motion, actually.
Second.
We don't need to vote on this, or just?
We do, actually.
Okay. We have a first and a second to bring it back for the next meeting? Please vote.
You're not working. Yes?
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right. Unfinished business, none. New business, community benefit fund grant awarded to the Grand Terrace Women's Club in an amount of two thousand dollars. Presented by Christine.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem council members. Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The Grand Terrace Women's Club submitted a community benefit funds application requesting two thousand dollars for the Child Help Fund. This fund hands out toys and gift cards to needy families and children within the city, and they're going to do that on December first, and Mary Wilson is here to speak on their behalf. Mrs. Wilson?
Honorable Mayor, may I please talk?
Push. Am I on now? Okay. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members, my name is Mary Wilson of the Grand Terrace Women's Club, and I am the third Vice President and Fundraising Chair, where I put the fun in fundraising. I stand before you to seek your support for our grant request of two thousand dollars, which we intend to dedicate to our cherished Christmas Child Help Program. Last year, thanks to the generosity of the community, we were able to provide vital assistance to four families facing difficult times. Each family received five hundred dollar Stater Brothers gift cards and three hundred dollar Walmart or Target gift cards, along with toys donated to our club. These contributions made a profound difference in their lives, bringing joy and relief during the holiday season. This year, our goal is to double our efforts. The challenges our community faces have only grown with rising costs of food, gas, and clothing, making it even harder for underprivileged families to make ends meet. By approving our request, you will empower us to extend our reach, touching the lives of even more children and families in Grand Terrace who desperately need our support. Your yes vote will enable us to, enable us to continue this vital tradition of giving, ensuring that the spirit of Christmas reaches every corner of our community. Together, we can provide not just gifts, but hope and joy during these trying times. Thank you for your consideration and for the unwavering support you provide to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? No? Well, thank you very much, and thank you for everything the Women's Club do for Grand Terrace. And, and you know, um, you guys were out there at the Blue Mountain Festival, right?
Yes.
This year too?
Yes.
You know, I'm inviting you guys, if you want to walk in the parade, you could be doing that too, so.
Okay.
There you wear your little hats or bonnet, but, you know, but I really appreciate everything, and if you have anything that, um, you know, it's, it's such a good cause that you're doing for these, you know, kids and stuff, you know, when it... I remember, I was a kid, I was one of those receiving ends when, you know, growing up and stuff, so it's great when, you know, strangers take time out and, you know, show you love and, you know, help you out, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. So do I have a motion and a second for this?
Motion.
Second.
Mayor?
Oh, and public com- I'm sorry.
Just for the record, there is no public comment.
Do we have a public comment on this?
Yeah. And if I may ask, um, may we just do roll call vote since Mayor Protem Wilson's?
Since he broke his button?
His butt is broken.
Okay. So do we have any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay. I was, I knew that, that's why I didn't ask you that. Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sabino?
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Hesse?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the community benefit grant fund for the Grand Terrace High School Cheer Booster Club for two thousand, and you're still up there?
I'm still up here.
Okay.
So the Grand Terrace Cheer Booster Club submitted a community benefit fund application requesting two thousand dollars to help the cheerleading squad for the entire year, um, this upcoming school year for different things, and that would be electrolyte drinks and to help them with their clothing throughout the year. And Mrs. Bowles, would you like to help speak about the cheer? Mr. Rodriguez will speak about his cheer team.
So his boss, the boss sent you today?
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Um, good evening, I'm Angel Rodriguez, I'm the Vice President of the Cheer Booster Club, um, at the high school. Uh, my wife is the coach. Um, I just, I'm here on behalf of the team, the team's out at camp now, um, in, or in, I'm sorry, Costa Mesa. Um, and we're just, you know, it's extremely expensive to, you know, fund a cheer team and, uh, and all that they do. We're at several city events and competitions, and, um, we're just trying to help aid the parents in, in the costs of that, and, uh, this would greatly, um, help that.
Thank you very much. Uh, council, any questions? You know, uh, not only do your cheerleaders squad cheer during all the games and pepper rallies, I'm sorry, Ken, did you have something?
No.
You know, you guys are at every one of our events, you know?
Right.
From the top of Blue Mountain, you know?
Right.
Cheering us on to get up there and, and, um, pushing us off when we get up there, no. But you know what, uh, you know, the blue light, everything that we do, your cheerleaders are always there, so.
Right.
If we could do a little help for them, you know, please, you know, let's do it, and, you know, we really appreciate them being part of our community and, and, you know, um, and they're out there at Blue Mountain Festival, you know, walking and, and, you know, helping out with the, setting everything up and helping people, and so they, you guys are really doing a great job showing them how it is to be teamwork and, and, you know, working for the public and stuff, so I really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
So, um, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, and I saw some of those gals over there throwing some of those guys over in the, in the wrestling thing, and I was pretty impressed.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, there you go. So, then you got cheerleading wrestling, is that a new move or something?
Ah, no, I think they were just trying out the moves.
But, you know, thank you for you and your wife doing everything too, and all the coaches and stuff.
No problem, we're always happy to help.
And we're really proud of them, and so do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sabino?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Hesse?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
I'd like to thank you from the city manager's office as well. The events you're involved in with your group, with your group, we could not pull them off without you. You're integral to making them a success, so thank you.
Yeah, like I said, we're always happy to help, um, with anything you guys need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So, uh, we have any more?
One more.
Uh, oh, I was, okay.
Hello.
The Grand Terrace Boy Scout troop. You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, good evening, council. Natalie Oroz, Department Secretary for Public Works. Today, I'm presenting the proposal for a community benefit fund for the Boy Scouts. They submitted an application requesting two thousand dollars from the fund to support their 2024 Boy Scout Summer Camp. This camp is taking place over seven days from January seventh to July thirteenth in Idolwell, California. During this time, the Scouts will participate in a variety of outdoor activities, including rock climbing, swimming, first aid, lifesaving, orienteering, pioneering, wood craving, and search and rescue, firearm safety, teamwork, leadership, and self-management. We have representatives Jenny Kennedy and Heather Altimerano from the Boy Scouts here to answer any questions.
So they're at camp right now?
Yes, I believe so.
Honorable Mayor Hesse and honorable members of the council, thank you so much for having us here today. Um, she gave us a wonderful introduction, uh, but to answer one of your questions, yes, camp is currently underway this week, um, through fundraising efforts such as our popcorn sales and the generous support from the community of Grand Terrace, uh, including, um, Mayor Hesse, thank you so much. Um, we were able to pay for the upfront registration costs to get the boys to camp this week, and , um, the, upon your approval of this grant, it will enable us to pay the remaining registration costs.
Okay, great.
I'm Heather Altimerano, I'm the Treasurer for Troop Forty here in Grand Terrace. Um, we, like Jenny said, we have fundraised and sought out sponsorships, uh, from different businesses. We've, um, been able to receive sponsorships from the Lions Club, from Dr. Paul Orthodontist, from, uh, Rob Shop, from multiple sources here in town and neighboring communities, uh, which paid for about half of it, and so we are here today requesting the two thousand dollars to help, uh, finish paying for our summer camp. Um, we, well, in addition to, uh, things like camping and fishing and swimming and canoeing, the boys are learning, uh, skills like lifesaving, uh, search and rescue, environmental studies, emergency preparedness, and they learn so much from these summer camps, like how to work as a team, be part of a community, they learn independence, and it's such a vital part of our, our program that, uh, we try to make it accessible for every, every scout to attend summer camp.
Okay.
We currently have eight boys out of our troop out there this week.
So all the boys were able to make it, or?
All the ones that didn't have some kind of a family conflict of some sort were able to make it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. All right, does the council have any questions? Well, once again, you guys are, are big source for helping us out, you know, carrying the flag during our bring-back parade, we were very proud of that, and I think Conrad actually walked with you guys, or?
Walked with us.
Or did they carry you?
It was, it was a toss-up. That was a, that was a walk with those guys, I enjoyed it.
Did, did they do the drill, keep you in step and stuff?
Oh, yeah, they were taskmasters.
Yeah. But, you know, and, uh, I, well, you got a, the newest Eagle Scout there, I think, one with this thing, so.
I'm very proud of him.
But, you know, it's, it's such a blessing that, you know, what you guys are doing for these young men, you know, for their future that they're doing up there, and, and, you know, not only the camp, that they learn all those life skills, they're learning camaraderie and teamwork too. And when somebody tells them that they can't do it, they, they get the "I can do it" attitude, so, you know, the first one to volunteer, you know, and get it done, instead of making excuses why it can't be done, so that's what's a big part of it. And, you know, plus, it's hot up there, right? And or is it nice, the weather's nice?
Oh, it's pretty nice up in Idolwell, so it's a little bit cooler.
And fishing, you know, you guys could invite me to go fishing, I would've went fishing with you.
Well, we have, we do have a lake on the, the campground, which is a really beautiful campground.
Yeah, 'cause when I went to camp, it was the Marine Corps. Our camp guide wasn't very nice to us, you know, he yelled at us all the time, we couldn't do anything right, but, yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much, uh, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Okay, no public comment, do we have a motion and a second?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sabino?
Aye.
Councilmembers, uh, Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Hesse?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
When the boys come back, have them tell us about their experience and stuff.
Oh, we will.
Okay? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any future agenda items at this time? Do you council want to bring something? None? All right. So council communications, Michelle, you have anything you want?
Um, sorry, I spent eight days in Vegas in a hotel room, not because I was partying. Um, my daughter had national dance competition out there, so I get that it is expensive to have children who compete, um, in these championships and just across the board. Um, and just the, the yelling and the screaming that goes on, um, you know, it, it's exhausting to us parents as well. Um, so kudos to you and to our organizations who are here, Boy Scouts, um, our Booster Club and our Women's Club. Um, if you'd like to connect after the meeting, I do have contacts with redistribution centers because I know these days, right now, it's really hard to make your dollars stretch, and there are organizations out there that support nonprofits in being able to help you get access to some of those things, so feel free to, to reach out. I know that, Dawn, we connected about Lions Club as well, so, um, I'm happy to do that, but kudos to all of you and for, thank you for everything that you're doing in the community.
Thank you, Michelle. Ken?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, I have a statement to read to the record, and, uh, if you'll, uh... defer to me in this respect, and, uh, hopefully, we get through this process. I want the community, my council colleagues and staff, to know that I will not be standing for election for November twenty-fourth in the general election for this year. July fifteenth, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four begins the candidate filing period, and I want to give those with city council aspirations the opportunity to properly evaluate all their options in determining whether or not they will be a candidate for city council. For me, personally and professionally, it is time to turn the page, and at this juncture in the city's history, in my opinion, there is no better time to do so. There are a number of reasons for my decision and a few that are particularly important as follows. I've been a public service professional for forty-one years, and it's time to pass the baton on to someone else. The city council attended the County of San Bernardino City-County Conference, and we received an economic development outlook, uh, presentation, and I believe my colleagues will agree with me that the prospects for continued development and growth in the county in general and City of Grand Terrace in particular are very significant and something that we should be in a position to take advantage of. Vision 2030 still, um, provides guidance to the city council and the community, both on a day-to-day basis and for the long-term future. The city council and the Citizens Committee have a unified position with respect to the proposed ballot measure for law enforcement services, so the one percent sales and use tax is something that, uh, we all feel optimistic about and hope that we have a positive outcome. I believe that if, in fact, the voters agree with the city council assessment and the Citizens Committee assessment, that it will place Grand Terrace in a much better position in terms of public safety and the kind of community that we've always, that we moved here for and that we remain here as fellow community citizens. Our most significant project that we'll be considering in the very near future is the Gateway Specific Plan, and while the council and I can't outline whether we support the project, we have to have a, consider a project that's not presently before us, but our expectations with respect to that project are significant, and hopefully, if our expectations are met, the economic development trajectory for the city will be forever positively impacted. At our last meeting, we adopted the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. It's a balanced budget, a solid budget, and one that reflects the direction provided by council and the management expertise of the city manager and the director of finance. I believe that the city's financial condition is in the best shape it's been since the elimination of the redevelopment, uh, program some years ago. So it's taken time and effort to restructure the city's finances and to restructure the organization and to place it, um, on the best footing possible going forward. So when you compare what we have in our budget, what's been proposed and adopted, with the economic outlook that we receive from Beacon Economics, I believe that the economic development trajectory for the city is the best that it's ever been. We've taken important steps with respect to our number-one priority, which is a storm, storm drain master plan, and there are other general governance issues that we've not always been really good at from Grand Terrace's history, the forty-five years that we've been in existence, but recently, the city council approved, uh, fee studies for staff compensation, development fee studies, and development impact fee studies. development fee studies and development impact fee studies. It's important that the position, I shouldn't say the position, but the package that we adopted for the city council staff allows the city to attract and retain, um, high-level employees. And that's something that is most important into carrying out our mission. We also recently received information with respect to the proposed traffic signals at Mount Vernon and Van Buren and Mount Vernon and Pico. One of the key items in the budget process that we just recently approved is the proposed one-stop shopping center, a joint development of the Planning and Development Services Department and Mr. Guardia's Building and Safety Department. And from experience, I can tell you that if that particular aspect, that goal is accomplished, it will forever change the way we do business from a development review and approval process. So I strongly support that, um, going forward. And last, but certainly not least, um, my wife is a fellow retiree. We just recently, uh, celebrated our 34th anniversary. She's a retired public sector employee of 37 years, like myself. And so it's been, uh, significant that the support that I've received from her over the years. It certainly helped that she was a public sector employee and understood city council meetings and late meetings and community meetings and committee meetings and the like. So, having said all that, I'm not a supporter of the lame duck philosophy. I intend to continue being an effective, hopefully an effective partner with my colleagues. I've tremendously enjoyed working with them. I think the city council, Mayor Pro Tim Wilson mentioned last week that, um, the camaraderie and the ability of us to work together effectively. And I could not echo his comments from last, uh, last council meeting, uh, stronger. It's been a wonderful experience. We don't always disagree, but we're never disagreeable. And we try hard to work effectively with one another. We don't always succeed, but we always try. And so from now until the end of this year, uh, until the election in November, I intend to carry out my responsibilities as a councilperson. When I was first appointed to this position, I indicated to the city council that I hope to be value-added, uh, to the council as a whole, based upon my training and education and experience. Um, I hope that I have been. I hope to continue to do that. And, um, if you're with me this far, I appreciate your, your time and attention. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you for your statements there, Councilman Henderson. So thank you for your service. I'm sure we'll get more opportunity to be able to address that in later months. And, uh, I, I would just like to say personally that, uh, observation through this timeframe, I can't ask for a, uh, better, uh, companion in this, in this work that we do. And, uh, it's been a great experience and I appreciate your service. Uh, I do not have any new news, although I will say, folks, it's hot out there. So be careful. Uh, get everything darkened up as much as you can and try to, try to be proactive uh, rather than reactive, which the fire department really understands. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Deborah, I'm gonna need the car tomorrow. And me and Councilman Henderson are going to ride on that one, uh, highway. And I'll make sure I run out of gas so you can't quit, okay?
Gonna send it off, right?
Really good times, Ken. Is it ready? Just put on quarter of a tank. We'll, we'll make it this time. Um, I'm not gonna say goodbye yet because it's not time to say goodbye. But you know what I, I do admire you, Ken, is, uh, not waiting till the last minute so other, other people can have the opportunity to put their name in the hat and move forward. Because I, I think that's one of the, the hardest things when you're there and, and you're, it's, that's a selfish way to do that. And you have never been a selfish person. You always, always continue to look out for the city and its best interests. And, and you know, and I really appreciate everything you did. And I really appreciate you, you put your name in the hat when I, you know, got appointed, well, elected as mayor, you know? Of course, your wife made you do it because I talked to her. I went to the boss, you know? But, um, your experience and your knowledge and your wisdom and your friendship is, you know, forever a part of my life. And I really appreciate that in this council life. So we won't get all mushy and say goodbye because you've still gotta earn your paycheck until, and, well, January. And you get to still be at the Christmas lighting thing, right? Is that, we don't swear until.
First meeting in December.
Okay. All right. Bless you. So I got to attend a, a joint, uh, League of City meeting with Riverside County. So, uh, San Bernardino, the Inland Empire Desert Mountain Community and Riverside County, we're combining efforts on it. And I'm on the, I'm the vice president for the Inland Empire League of Cities. And we're gonna make a voice down here in Southern California. We got the biggest population in this state, but we get the less votes and what we need done here. So, um, was there with the, uh, under sheriff from San Bernardino and then the sheriff from Riverside. And you know, we're talking, so the biggest thing now, of course, everybody knows is the crime and everything else that's going on and Proposition 47 10 years ago. And a lot of people, it passed by 61% because what happened? The, um, they worded as the Safe School Act. And people saw that and made it more all fuzzy and stuff and they didn't read it. So that's why they voted for it. 61%. So right now, 78% of Californians want to get rid of 14. They see 10 years, what had happened. Our governor, that's his baby, along with, uh, the vice president, she was our attorney general, then they, they wrote this. And one of the biggest thing was, because you know, I'm retired federal corrections, um, was to save money by taking people out of the state facilities and putting them in the jail facilities, which actually happens to be, and it's burdening on the community. And one of the other biggest thing was it took away resources for people. Instead of being incarcerated, they get a chance to go to, um, drug, you know, court and, you know, get fixed and help and stuff. And it was mandatory. Now, if you gave a person, uh, a drug addict, hey, you know, you can go here if you want or you could just stay with the slap on the wrist. They're gonna stay with the slap on the wrist. This is a mandatory thing. So Prop 36, it's not a complete save-all, but it's, it's a first step. And it's gonna go where, um, they're gonna add these multi, you know, retail thefts, combine them together. So you'll have a felony. They're gonna bring back, you know, or fentanyl and stuff, you know? If you get caught selling it and somebody dies, there'd be stricter penalties. Also, there's gonna be drug court coming back. So there's all kinds of things in there. That's the pros. So there's a little bit, you know, reprieve. We're getting a little bit back. Um, the con is that they're gonna try to sell you that there's 11 bills on to help law enforcement. And if Prop 36 passes, those bills will die. Those bills will not help law enforcement. Those bills are there to try to get rid of 36. So once again, I'm just telling you what we did at the League of Cities. So do your homework. I'm available anytime if you want to have questions on it, but please read your ballots. Do your education. Don't listen to that two-minute commercial because a lot of money's gonna get thrown into this. And ask yourself, are we better off now than we were in 2014 when 47 passed and SB 109? Have you seen crime rise? Have you seen the homelessness rise? And, you know, look, do your education on voting who you want to represent you. Make sure they have the same family values, values that you have and hold dear to your heart. Like I said, Southern California, we have Riverside, San Bernardino, San Diego, Orange County, LA County. We are the biggest part of the state compared to the northern part. And the northern part's running us. And San Francisco Bay Area. Now, I'll leave it at that, what's coming out of the Bay Area. So just do your homework on these propositions and you'll get over the warm fuzzy thing and do the grit and follow and educate yourself. And, um, and another thing, um, I got a call from a distraught mother and it was a sad call because she said the city's Facebook site is taking pictures of her house and all this other stuff. And the neighbors are upset and everything. So I don't want to get too involved into it. But I asked her, the city's Facebook site does not do that. I goes, it's 92313. And she said, yes. So everybody, 92313 is not the official city Facebook site. We will not go around taking pictures and we will not be posting negative stuff like that. You will not get any negative stuff from the city's Facebook site. And I don't know if 92313 has a disclaimer saying that this is not official city's Facebook site for Grand Terrace. I don't know if we could look into that, Adrian, or what verification or anything we could do for that, but.
We could look into that.
Yeah. But you know, people just assume. And you know, I'm not saying it's not a good site for information, but our city Facebook site, if you want to join it, you could join cities or Grand Terrace Facebook and also sign up for any emails. That's the best way to be informed and stay informed. All right? Fireworks. Everybody, hopefully had a good Fourth of July. Once again, it's a never-ending battle. Once again, people are still doing it. And I was getting gas yesterday and I seen a firework come from the trailer park shooting over the freeway. So we still have it. The sheriffs, they have to see it. You neighbors know what's going on. Unfortunately, um, I'll let them speak about it. But we really, you know, one other thing why we need additional law enforcement to try to curtail, there's only a few people in the city that's lighting the fireworks. And the ones, once you get caught with that big fine, I guarantee they won't be lighting it anymore. Now, it might sound like a war zone. I mean, if you look down in the valley, it was a war zone. Um, but you know, the biggest thing is like my wife's 91-year-old grandfather, Korean War vet, I had to take him home early because he started shaking and stuff. So if you guys ever seen a PTSD episode, it's really sad, especially for a 91-year-old that hasn't been in war since 1950. And a lot of stuff still does it. So, and especially for pets and everything too. So just be respectful and stop it. And you know, and you know, that's the whole thing about this community is having respect for each other. Excuse me. And you know, helping each other out. That's the biggest thing. So once again, you know, Ken, thank you for letting us know that. But, um, I know you'll never be, like you said, you're always involved and we always appreciate it. And you know, your knowledge and wisdom has really helped us see. And we have come a long way and, and we're moving forward. And, um, I really appreciate everything. But you know, I hope you're gonna be there for the League of Cities so we could do another road trip. Okay, so. All right. So city manager, you have anything?
Um, yes. Did you, did you want to add anything to the fireworks or did the mayor cover that?
No, I believe the mayor covered that. Just give us some reference. It was the busiest Fourth of July that we've ever had in the county as a whole. In a single day, we ran 1,456 calls. On average, on the Fourth of July, we run about 900. On average day-to-day, we run about 600 calls for the county fire district through Confire. It was an extremely busy day for all of us, I'm sure for the sheriffs as well. The enforcement, obviously, like the mayor said, uh, we have to see it. Uh, the enforcement comes from the, the SO side. Um, and for us, it was actually a very, I don't wanna say easy day, but with what we've seen in the past, there was no significant fires. Um, here in the East Valley, we had a lot of significant fires throughout the state as a whole. But here in the East Valley, um, there was quite a bit of responsibility. If there is any for illegal fireworks, um, we had a 416 total fire calls that we were able to keep extremely small. So we call that a success if there is to be a success. That was a small success, but it is getting progressively busier each Fourth of July.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo what the chief said. Um, it was also very busy for us. We, we did have fire marshal riding along with the deputy. Their sole purpose that night was, uh, to respond to those calls for service. We, and we did, we responded to 13 separate calls, um, which was the, the total number of calls that came in that night. Uh, we did actually confiscate and seize, I'll say maybe 20 pounds or so of illegal fireworks. And that person did receive a citation for that. Uh, but we made numerous other contacts with people. Um, and there was some education that was done. Not, not everybody received citations, but we did educate a bunch of people on the safety aspects of just even the safe and sane stuff. But, uh, just for the people out in the audience listening, um, you know, one of, and I've talked about this in the past, but the, the biggest help that we can get when those calls come in is a specific location. And a number of those calls that we did receive were from an address, um, stating that fireworks were in the area. So there was really no specific direction to point us to where they were actually coming from. So when we get there and we see fireworks in the sky somewhere, it doesn't really, um, point us, excuse me, point us to the house where they originated from, which is really what we need to do. So, um, and, and several of the callers too, that were, were calling in, uh, to let us know what was happening, but they wanted to remain anonymous and, uh, didn't really provide a bunch of information for us to follow back up on. So, so those are things that we continue to, um, um, to try to manage. And you know, the best thing that we can do is just, as we're doing tonight, keep people educated on, on what it is that we need to, to do our jobs, to make everybody safe and enjoy the Fourth of July. And we understand what the fireworks are all about and, you know, we're all for them. But to that, I mean, we also did have a small fire that was started by fireworks. And I think that was on McLaren. Um, it was quickly put out. And again, we took that opportunity to talk to those folks. So, um, we, we just continue to, uh, to, to battle those things. I don't think it's ever gonna stop. We understand that. Again, uh, our, our goal is to try to, try to mitigate it as much as we can and then educate folks on, on how to be safe. So that's, that's pretty much everything that we did on, uh, on the Fourth. And I don't believe we had any other calls other than the Fourth. There may have been one or two, but the bulk of the calls all came in on the Fourth. So if it's still occurring, um, you know, we'd like, we love that information to follow up on. So please provide us with as much specific information as you can and, and, uh, we'll go out there and we'll talk to some folks.
So can we get a drone next year and fly over and see that and be up there on Blue Mountain and do a spotter? I'll, I'll do that.
You're hired, absolutely.
All right. I'll shoot you the grids.
I'm not gonna carry you up there, but yeah.
No, I'll, I'll shoot you the grids. So just send me, you know, Diet Coke. I'll be all right.
There you go.
No, thank you. And, um, and it's a blessing that nobody's house caught on fire. Because like I said, most, when the houses do catch a fire, it's people putting their trash can up there by the house and they're still smoldering. And you know, that, a house fire is very devastating. And, you know, I, I can't believe people are shooting off fireworks by Blue Mountain when all of us have been hit by our fire insurance being canceled and stuff. So, you know, it's kinda annoying. And then I think I had a call from the Highlands too and, and I talked to the city manager about getting some of their trees trimmed because they're shooting by the trees that go in by the condos. So it's, it's just a common sense and a lot of people seem to lack of, you know, drinking and fireworks don't go along together. So I appreciate what you guys did, you know, and it took away time. But you know, we're here to celebrate our nation's freedom, but we're here to do it in a safe, you know, respectful manner. So Conrad, did you have anything else?
Um, yeah, I wanted, actually I wanted to thank the community. We have had, um, just really great compliance when we've asked people to do things on the code enforcement side. The community, I think, is looking better, looking nicer, looking cleaner. You know, we, we did send out a couple hundred letters asking people to take care of the yards and lawns. And I drove around today and I want to thank everybody. You know, it's one of those things, they, they got out, they took care of what they needed to do. And it's, it's an incremental piece. So, um, we will be out looking here in the next couple of weeks for vehicle issues. And it's one of those things, every, every step will make it a little better. So abandoned vehicles, vehicles parked blocking driveways, vehicles with no registration, that project car that you meant to get to that's still covered in cobwebs and dust on your driveway. That, those guys gotta be covered. Um, you know, don't park on your front lawn. Those, those, those kind of things. We'll be out looking for those. And, um, kind of remind, remind our residents that, um, you know, we can do better. And as a community, we are doing better, but we can always do better. And a final one, Councilmember Henderson, thank you for everything you've done. I'm looking forward to finishing out the year with you. And I'm not supposed to get political. That's part of, a big part of my job. But for anybody that plans on running, that's a big set of shoes to fill. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Closed session, none. So we're gonna go and adjourn to the next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. And also reminder, tomorrow, there's a chamber meeting at Woody's at 8 o'clock. If you're a business person or want to know about your business and be part of a team, meet at Woody's 8 o'clock. I think they got free coffee. And so that's, and then we're also gonna be recognizing the business of the month, which is Kona Ice. And I guess this is really their good business this time of the year. Winter time, I don't know, but you know. But I appreciate everything and you know, I'm glad everybody had a safe and happy Fourth of July and God bless. Leading adjourn.